Everybody join me in the pledge, please.
I would as always testify under the United States of America and to the great object for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible liberty and justice for all.
Who haven't done so already, if you'd please silence your phones. Okay, let's keep going. Looking to approve the minutes from October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Motion that we approved the minutes from October twenty eighth.
So. Uh, discussion. All in favor?
Hi.
Expenditures, approve the payment of the bills.
Make a motion that we authorize the payment of the bills from the A Fund Vouchers number nine, six, two through one thousand four in the amount of thirty eight thousand, four hundred and thirty eight dollars and fifteen cents. From the F and G Fund vouchers number two ninety through three hundred in the amount of one hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and fifty one dollars and seventeen cents. And from the T and A Fund voucher number twenty seven in the amount of one thousand, seven hundred and fifty nine dollars and eight cents.
Can I have a second? One second. Uh, discussion, the large amount in the F and G is from our, the amount we pay into the Cortland Water Sewer, uh, sewer treatment plant. Alright, um, all in favor?
I.
Any opposed? None heard? Carried. Alright, report on offices, codes.
The motion and we approve the codes report.
Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion. All in favor?
Alright.
I. Any opposed? None heard? Carried. Alright, dog report. Well, cat and dog report.
Make a motion that we approve the dog report.
Can I have a second? So. Uh, discussion. All in favor?
Alright.
I. Any opposed? None heard? Carried. EPW. And because we didn't have the first meeting in November, this, uh, October, we seem a long time ago, but it's not that far. Alright, can I take a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, DPW report.
Alright, can I have a second?
Also.
Discussion. All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? None heard? Carried. Fire Department.
I'll make a motion and accept the fire department. And so there is.
Okay, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? None heard? Carried. Police Department.
Make motion to approve the October forty support.
Can I have a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Discussion. All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? None heard? Carried. Recreation.
Yeah, yeah, been a bed full of fall. I'll make a motion and accept the record part is presented.
Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Uh, discussion. Uh, Andrew will be coming up with some surplus uh, soccer balls. That will be at the meeting in December for us to declare. Alright, all in favor?
I.
Any opposed? None heard? Carried. Water and Sewer.
I'll make a motion and accept the water and sewer report stated here.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? None heard? Carried. Privilege of the floor. Mike?
Hey. I'll give you a little update on town of Homer and, uh, we've been as busy as you guys. We passed our budget. Last meeting, we had an eight percent tax increase. Ooh. The truth, which equates to fifty five cents per thousand. They had no choice because they found it so much from us. And, uh, you know, the county come out with their budget, but they're not totally being honest because they come out and presented a seven percent increase, two point two. But they forgot to mention the, uh, three percent they took right out the top, which is millions affecting all of us little municipalities, the rest of us. Affecting you guys and you know, so that wasn't really a then plus they're raising their tipping fee. So they're not really being totally honest. Reporting what their tax rate is, but anyways. Our lower level, we're moving right along. We ran into a stag full. Uh, we found some microlite and believe it or not, the village vault. There was two vaults downstairs. The one they called the village vault, one was, uh, the other vault for records. One was solid concrete, which took them three weeks to hammer it out because it was so big and I don't know what they planned on with that, but it was just they hit the village vault, which was blocked. That should have been done in a day. Of course, they hit microlite, microlite. New York State's the only state that says microlite could be asbestos, shut the whole bracket down. So we lost three weeks. So anyways, we're back up and running. They got trenches dug downstairs. We're putting in sewer and stuff in. Our only dilemma is now it's gonna push us to the end of February, first part of March. I'm trying to push them to get back on track here, but once the uh, I think in another couple of weeks, once we get cement poured back in and stuff, it'll start moving along faster. Thank the village and you, and you guys for the help they gave us locating the sewer and our water lines. That was a big help. Appreciate that. Been talking with cheap pavement and stuff, a lot of planning going on for colors, laws, textures, the bulletproof glass and everything that we, we need to install for police department. So he's been, uh, we've been working very closely with that and we'll pad on a lot of that. So colors are coming up next and, um, that's always a favorite thing. As you notice, we got our village park. We put the parking lot sign out there for control parking. Now we got the snow plowing signs up so people hopefully will stay out. The town has to pass the law on that, but we still have them up, so they won't be able to issue a ticket, but uh, until we pass that law on the town so they can hopefully people, we're not looking to issue tickets. We just want people to sail away. Your guys plowed a lot, so it's easier to plow for you. So that's where we're at. Um. We're working on, you know, part of the town, we're, we're gonna, we get two big solar projects going. One smaller one and one big one, and we're really working hard to, uh, for a pilot and a host agreement. Doesn't do the village in, in a sense there, but it increases the income for the town. When the town makes more money, we don't have to raise taxes and you know, we spread it out. Um, so we're working hard on that. We just hired a lawyer from Rochester, Cortlandville, Homer and Solon. Went together because that's the three municipalities. The big Homer solar project effects. And then we're gonna be looking at hiring an engineer now, so we're working on that. You know, again, it does affect the village, but yet it does because you're part of the town. So we're I'm looking at every way we can make income so we don't have to keep raising our taxes or at least hold stable. So other than that, it's about where we're at. Uh, the only thing I wanna say is you guys are invited next, uh, the tenth is gonna be our board meeting. If you wanna come at five thirty, Barry Warren has been on our board for thirty years. Probably almost everybody here knows he's retiring.
Oh.
We're gonna have a little get together at five thirty. Who has some cookies and stuff, come in and greet Barry? If you'd like, so you're all invited. He's just been a staple here for so long.
Yeah.
Thirty years, blows my mind. So you're all invited. Thanks, Mike.
Alright, read.
I want it comes right behind the town.
Yeah, yeah. Well, at least we know you voted no.
I, I did, and I'll start off, you know, with that, um, you know, budgets are, are big, they're, they're complicated, um, and being this, in my second budget go around, since I've been on the county legislature, uh, there always, there are lots of different interests that are at play, that are at stake, that you wanna be able to satisfy. Um, not always, not everybody, not everybody gets satisfied all the time. Uh, this was a budget that I, I can't praise the county administrator enough, given the short timeline from when he came in uh, in October to when the budget was released, he was able to hop right in and get his feet in, in the pool and he produced a budget that from my perspective was, um, was much more accessible to the general public to read. Uh, the one issue with the accessibility was that there was approximately one week, uh, in between the release of the tentative budget uh, and the final vote, uh, on the tentative budget, uh, last Thursday, order to make amendments, make adjustments. So there was not a whole lot of time to, to make, uh, significant amendments to it. Uh, did end up voting against it because I, I was not comfortable with with the amount of tax increase that it called for. Um, twelve million, twelve million dollars in new spending without uh, in, in full honesty, having been able to go through the whole budget or in forty six pages myself in, in a week. Um, wasn't able to, to do that, so didn't feel comfortable that I was able to cast a vote for it. Um, that being said, I've, I've identified myself places of, of spending that I, I do think can be cut back and trimmed and reduced, and I'll be uh, working productively, uh, with my colleagues, uh, going into next year and trying to find those places of agreement, uh, to be able to cut back on those places. Uh, so I look forward to, to doing that because ultimately this, this money is the taxpayers and that's what we are all there to, to do. Uh, on a different note, um, Paul, actually on the same topic of the budget. In December, I will be holding a district meeting, the time and place, uh, to be determined, uh, but all of you absolutely will be invited. Uh, I've asked the, the chair of the finance committee, uh, to, to join me in uh, addressing any questions that residents may have about the county budget and what is factoring into some of these increases. So that district meeting will be held at some point in December. I look forward to that and there'll be advertisements about that. Uh, beyond that, I did vote against the tipping fee increase. Uh, I thought it was too significant of an increase too quickly. Um, and legislator Jones, uh, from, from the northern half of the village, uh, joined me, uh, in that. So
Wow.
The, uh, the work, uh, continues to, to go on. Um, I continue to love the work that I do and I learn more every day. Uh, and as always, uh, very, uh, it's, it's always great to work alongside uh, you and the village and, and you and the town to work together to make sure that the interests of Homer are, are front and center.
Thanks for you. Thanks, Mike. Uh, alright, anybody else for privilege of the floor? Alright. Uh, no old business. New business, uh. Time to accept the biannual village historians report. And Mike, you're gonna hear this report later, so.
I'm gonna sneak out.
There's someone else is staring at me directly.
I'm gonna sit over there.
There we go.
How so long has we had you centered on camera there, Mike? There we go.
Why isn't Mr. Porter here tonight? Things that come your way as it has started.
Is this him or his brother?
Someone out there that.
You'll have to hold that up closer to the camera.
Everyone can see it, really see it.
I can't tell if it was, uh, king and queen, homecoming, because it says here, Mr. Housley, Mr. Hellion, I don't know what. I need him here to tell me.
Exactly. It's historical record, we all need to know.
Okay, yes, it's time for my annual report, um. What, you should have run to a copy or digital copy of this annual report, a report to provide to the county historian and to the state historian. Because, uh, it also contains the information I already shared with you back in, back in May, so I'm not gonna go over that. It's already on here, but I'm gonna skip that. And maybe anything that doesn't pertain to uh, the village or Jermaine to the town, I would skip as well, but if you follow along with me. Under administrative tasks, I'm just gonna just skip through the first two third because it's, it's standard of what I said last six months ago. But we're down below where it says on May twenty ninth, I did the final removal of all items remaining in the town's vault. The bound copies of town board minutes from seventeen ninety seven to nineteen ninety were placed in a large file cabinet in my office. Parenthetically, but should be within some kind of water and fireproof protection. Other items have been moved to the balcony area of the town hall. On May thirtieth, I submitted to the town clerk per request the provenances of the carpenter portraits owned by the town of Homer. A number of office visits, I estimate four, uh, let's go down to July seventeenth, I met at my office and had storage spaces in the town hall with Karen Snyder to determine how much the town and village needs for items to be environmentally safe. Now that the two vaults are being removed due to renovations. And the option for providing for that safety. I, I'm prepared to report the town supervisor and the village mayor and submitted it electronically the next day. On October third, I met with the assistant director of the Cortland County Historical Society to film segments in which I read the two entries I submitted for clues in the historical photo scavenger hunt sponsored by the society. The two segments appeared on Facebook and received positive reviews and happy to report the winning photograph was of the Union Building. Uh, the clue involved looking for a place that had twelve chimneys. But you're not in a position unless you've got a drone to see that there's more than just six on one side, six on the other. But it was a nice picture with kids involved. On October twenty third, met with Jay Curry, travel town historian for delivery of a box of artifacts that I will uh, address when we get to the acquisitions part of the form. Number of phone and email inquiries received and answered, I estimate to fifteen. Uh, I only provided a few here, for example, such as on May twenty first, received a lengthy phone call from nationally recognized presidential historian Larry Cook of Pennsylvania, who originally was from Manlius, New York. He was requesting to meet with me and have a tour of carpenter sites in Homer on the twenty eighth. In exchange for me and Dave Buellin coming to his residence to see a huge, and I mean huge, collection of carpenter paintings, diaries and related items he had recently acquired from a carpenter descendant in Manlius. These are items that have never seen, uh, people before and you'll probably bring them here, man. And it says here, Cook is now writing a book about carpenters' interactions with the five presidents that sat for their portraits by him. Cook has offered to come to Homer next May to help raise funds for Homer's Lincoln Legacy Monument. Uh, you can see what I got down under lectures and presentations. Um, all proceeds will go, he says, to the to the monument fund. And I'll explain later where he's getting free housing. It's turning into a community project, which it should. Okay, and June sixth, a resident emailed to wish to know the founding date of Homer, the founding date. I responded with the chronology of events from seventeen ninety one to seventeen ninety six, which equate with the concept of founding. So it's okay, it's founding when the settlers arrived, is founding when they, next year started the homestead, is it when the town was created? Is it next year when the first town board election was held? A lot, it takes a lot of years to found something. On July first, I spoke by phone with Rich Cunningham of Thoma Development about the current status of the circus house, which at the time had not received funding for restoration work and repurposing of the site. On July eighth, I spoke by phone with the owner of the circus house. She gave me an update on the status of the property and assured me she was going to make the restoration happen. Uh, I need to know because this has happened since I completed this report. I was invited to attend a, um, uh, Preservation Association of Central New York Summit, they called it. A bunch of people, uh, professors and historians and contractors and preservationists all gathered in Syracuse on November sixth. And I had a chance then to meet with Beth Crawford of Crawford and Sterns. And with Andy Robley, who was the patron president, and both took me to the side and said, it's, it's, it's working. Project is, has begun. Stop worrying and tell the rest of the community, stop worrying. So I think I'm gonna have a notice and the Homer News. The people can be updated that is. Then I have it. Then they get preserved, some what, but hurry up, it's crumbling as we speak. On July tenth, as requested by email, I met with the mayor to discuss possible strategies for getting funding of the proposed Lincoln Monument similar to those used in Binghamton, New York for a statue erected of Harriet Tubman. And I was authorized to proceed with that exploration. I next reached out to Cortland College and the Harriet Tubman Center for Justice at Binghamton University to initiate discussions about funding Homer's monument project. I received responses from both. On July twenty fifth, Anne Bailey of the Binghamton Organization said she would meet in person with me. So I think I mentioned a little bit later. Next page. On July seventeenth, received email from Michelle Enright of Experience Cortland. This was in response to my email concern that the Homer Historic District was not included in its new website for visitors to use. She assured me that plans called for further website work that would include Homer. I will monitor that and see. On August tenth, uh, received Facebook message from Jason Revard, a former student that he had made the first treatment to conserve the carpenter monuments in Glenwood Cemetery for the village at no cost as he had offered to do. I told him I would write an article about his generous project for publication in the Homer newspaper. Um, that will come out this week. The final treatment was done on Labor Day. Uh, I want you to Google Revard's name and you will see he is an accomplished film sculptor and artist in his own right. The carpenter headstones I looked at are whiter now and the inscriptions pop out. You can actually read what's on there. So he's brought it back to what the original stones look like at no charge. Nice, huh?
Yes.
That's expensive words. Yes. And he's got the skills to do it and everybody does. On August twelfth, received email requests from Richard Schleflin for advice on how to best roll out his Randall Historic Marker at eighteen Tompkins Street in Cortland, New York. Well, that's not under my auspices. I gave him options from my experience. Number of municipal meetings attended, uh, seven in all. I just listed two examples. On May thirteenth and fourteenth, attended village and town board meetings respectively to give a semi-annual report. I presented to the town board the Hobart portraits that were conserved and showed an example of how a portrait by carpenter Homer's town clerk, Eden Webb, could be inexpensively reproduced on canvas and framed for display in the town ball. The board authorized the expenditure of two hundred dollars for such a project. It went over. It was more costly, but the results add to the ambiance ideal of the town clerk's office. And later I'll explain to you why the cost was higher. Number of meetings out of office, twenty two. I just listed ten examples and I won't read them all to you, but, uh, on, on December fourth, um, as you may know, Jeffrey Harris had an electrified and furnished dollhouse built to scale constructed like the house at twenty one Pugger Street in the village, built in eighteen ninety one. We couldn't find a place for it here. Uh, but the Portland County Historical Society has since accepted it. Is on display in the church purchased in Cortland for society presentations. Came along just in time, which has been named Harris Hall in honor of the Harris family of Homer. Riding with, uh, Jeff's father.
He's a good guy.
Yeah, right here.
He gave me some boat stuff when he, uh, when I first got here.
So our Curtis Harris was his father and he was like a, an official dedicated village historian back in the day. Also better than World War One. Okay, let's skip to the next page. We're getting there, page four. Uh, May seventeenth, uh, I was one of the invited local authors at Phillips Free Libraries Meet Local Authors event. Another opportunity to inform people about what we've got here. Uh, June twenty first, went to the Cortland Frame Shop to arrange for framing and productive protective glass for the reproduction of carpenter portrait of Eden Webb. Quality frames are imported from overseas and the price for the framing has tripled because of the tariffs imposed by the Trump industry. That's why it went over two hundred dollars. On July twenty fourth, met with, uh, Shannon Kern of T S K Warehouse and Luther Keen in Cortland. She placed three artifacts from the old, those council, they should be saying this to you guys. We had to auction stuff off and she helped us auction, tried to. Uh, there were no takers for the uh, artifacts from theater. So I was surprised about. People wanted chalkboards instead. Okay, July twenty eighth, met in person in Binghamton with Anne Bailey, PhD of the Harriet Tubman Center for Justice, to be guided on how Homer can gain funding for his proposed Lincoln Monument as was done to get funds for the recent Tubman statue she showed me. She said she would reach out to her counterparts at SUNY Cortland. Uh, SUNY College at Cortland on my behalf, and she did so. So on August twenty fifth, met at Cortland College with professors Sheets, Yocalina and P Talk about college engagement with the monument project. Dr. Pete, Pete Talk is a a new PhD, but she's had extensive experience with public history. The job of public historian. The practice of it and heritage tourism. And she is interested in helping where she can on the Homer project. She wanted me to take interns. I said, I don't have enough to keep them, keep them busy. I don't mean that. Maybe you think I do, but I don't think so. I said, instead, I will come and speak in April to your class about how I became a public historian. She said, got it. Life is full of trade offs. On October fourteenth, attended as consultant to a meeting of the Board of the Landmark Society. At this gathering, Morgan DeVois of Homer brought in a signed carpenter portrait done in eighteen ninety. The DeVois purchased at an online auction. Uh, I was blown away. Uh, it is signed on the back. We do not know who it is. I got Dave Prendergast working on it because if Dave can't find who the subject is, nobody can. Another portrait of two children is arriving soon. Actually, it has arrived, which DeVois believes is by carpenter. Uh, at the time I wrote this, I had not seen him in person yet and the online images did not strike me as the work of, of carpenter. Now that I've seen them, I think that maybe they are the work of a seventeen year old who was working in Syracuse under Sanford there. Uh, because it's not exactly primitive, but it's not the maturation that he shows later. And on one of the rims of a boater hat held by one of the children is a name, John, and it's difficult to read the last name. But above it, even in smaller prints like Syracuse, which is what leads me to believe he did this when he was studying. It's serious. Uh, let's get down to, let's see, there's been no classroom lectures or presentations. Public lectures and presentation, seven. But let's skip now to page five. Need to cover the ones that I spoke about. On May twenty eighth, I request, I did give a tour from noon until four twenty PM of carpenters' home to four guests, nationally known presidential historian Larry Cook from Lookspower, Pennsylvania, his wife and two friends who are history buffs, doctor and Mrs. Henry C. Navroski. The tour started with lunch at the Exchange, moved to the town hall and by my car to birthplace of carpenter, carpenter portraits at the library, Stoddard's birthplace and ended at carpenter's grave site at Glenwood Cemetery. Cook has acquired, like I said, a huge collection of carpenter sketches, paintings and diaries. And he invited David Knight to come to his home, and we did. And, uh, he is, like I said, he's offered to come to Homer. It's because of fundraiser. Uh, where to have and stay, I managed to get the only time. This is incredible. The only opening for May ninth, I think it was, was Wisdom's Gate. Which is now Airbnb. Back to being what it was, the, the, or travelers. Uh, she said they could stay there for no charge. All I gotta do is come up with two hundred dollars for the housekeeper and uh, give a walking tour where I was getting two hundred dollars. They said, give it to the housekeeper. So, uh, you know, uh, uh, arranged for a catered meal. I can't have a meal at Wisdom's. So before they go over to do the presentation at the Homer Center for the Arts about his book and help raise some money for us. Uh, September ninth, I was the afterlunch speaker at the twenty twenty five NICE regional conference for RC eleven and RC forty five retired teachers out to tenth and now these Hathaway housing, so on. Uh, I was told I had to speak about the history of Cortland County and I said, how much time do I have? You know, so I gave a thumbnail sketch of the history of Cortland County. Uh, the written report I got back from the office in Vestal showed my evaluation by attendees. In all areas, I arranged a five for excellent and one for poor. I received all fives. On October second, I offered a lunch and learn talk for the Cortland County Historical Society. The topic was two prominent businessmen of Homer's past, William Brockway and Sieg Sautel, based on research by me and Homer's dead roast. Historical publications. I continue to run a column on Homer's history in the Homer News, which is published every other week. This has the community engaged in providing material as I hoped it would. You started it with your newspaper. I know my next book, my next book, more stories, more stories from the heart of Central New York. Historic Homer Heritage will be released next month. Amazon is taking pre-orders now. This, this part is what amazes me. I have come to realize I am the first to publish books exclusively focused on stories of Homer's past.
Of course.
In two hundred and fifty years or whatever, I'm the first. This was my calling? Thank you.
Oh, no.
You didn't ask much.
Pretty amazing.
Yeah.
And people love it.
I, I'm having fun. Next to teaching is the second greatest job. That's like, you're still teaching, right?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Historical or hysterical events and celebrations. Twenty twenty five marks the one hundredth year of the Cortland County Historical Society. May fifteenth was invitation only to the bicentennial open house. I attended and saw the new exhibit, which they have worked so hard to create. Thank them for all the research, how I attended and saw the new exhibit, which they have worked so hard to create, thanked them for all the research help they've given me as the talented village historian. Then by invitation, I participated in the ribbon cutting ceremony for the opening of the former church on Grace Street in Cortland. That the society purchased. Now, this was on September seventeenth, when Tim Haskell of Cortland lectured on the life of his great grandfather, Albert Haskell Junior. Following this, I was honored and asked to join him for a Q and A. Because I had written an award-winning biography of his great grandfather. That's a lot of fun. Historic preservation projects, uh, that's, that's, that's the town. Heritage tourism projects on February seventeenth. Uh, again, courtesy of William G. Pomeroy Foundation, another historic roadside marker was put up. I think this makes marker number eight for me perhaps. Uh, this is put in front of the Elizabeth Brewster House. At their request. Uh, again, I thank those Stockton and the Village G P W crew for installing the marker in the summer and having it registered again, which occurred in late summer. August fourteenth, I met with Brett Riley of Breath Text to discuss what his firm could do for souvenir apparel. To help raise funds and community awareness. About the monument project. Uh, he wishes to participate sometime at. Once we get to the spring, uh, but I asked him probably to create a, one T-shirt that would have this on the back, which is the monument. Describe who the, who the sculptor is and what it's all about, then possibly have on the front, the usual. Homer being the, the heart. And at the same time, I'd like him, I think I already showed this to somebody, I'd like him to make one that has this on the back. It's got all of our nineteenth century notables. And the bottom has got, got me, but what we would do is we would drop that out. Drop that out and they would, they would square there for people who either are residents or visitors, just make great souvenir to put their names in there. They claim Homer is their place too. Uh, Stephanie Spina designed this. Sometimes she gives whole permission for us to duplicate this though. This could be exciting. And, and if we are got the monument going, then souvenirs could be sold regularly in Homer by uh, Homer men and boys or not a company or all of them both. Um, I want to know here that um. When I went to that summit, there was a professor from E S F. School of Environmental Science and Forestry. Uh, with the landscape architecture department, which my son got a degree in and uh. Crossed my mind that we could get input, like I mentioned to you, uh, we could get input from E S F to maybe have students get involved with designing a linear. Park design, what kind of native plants we should have, not necessarily edible. Thank you. Uh, but, but native plants and uh, maybe a survey, what the community would like to see, that gets community to buy in. Okay, September twentieth, at the request of the H C S class of nineteen seventy, I conducted a two-hour walking tour of historic Homer. At the end, they insisted I accept money to pay for the clean white overnight lodging. This is great. Don't improvise, don't improvise. Um. Like I already said, the owner, uh, who actually lives in California, Karen Jan, she says, yes, I want to be part of this community thing. Yes. So I delved into finding the economic impact of tourism in the state, the Finger Lakes region and Portland County. So I want you to, I'll bring your attention to it a little bit later, the addendum, addendum A, this report as interesting to this statistics. That could impact, I feel, local decision-making on building a better future for Homer. Conferences and workshops attended, um. On May tenth, I attended the annual gathering of historians of region nine of ethnies. Held at the new conference center at Delphi Falls County Park near Casanova. Next year's site is to be in Portland County. And fortunately, the church required for the Portland County Historical Society will be the perfect venue. See how things fall into place. You wait, I'm running out of time. I said, with financial support of the town of Homer. I was able to attend the annual conference of the Association of Public Historians in New York State. The theme this year was small communities, big ideas. And I said, that's Homer. So I ended up being one of the presenters that they accepted. And my topic was from stories to stone. How one historian is making a small community's heritage, heritage tangible and accessible. The focus was on our historic district, the landmark society, the Homer News. Published folks on our Lincoln Men and local history, guided walking tours and a big idea of the bronze monument, Homer's Lincoln Legacy. Always to celebrate and promote our community as a place for heritage tourism. Now, while I'm grateful and honored, the town and village had nominated me for an award at the conference. All awards I noticed, with the exception of one, went to historians from Madison County, which is where the conference was held. I do want you to see, and I'll bring your attention to it later, Addendum B. Uh, where you can find the conference description of my presentation. Which the landmark society has asked me to please offer to the local public at a future date. I'll do a reprise of what I did, because some of them attended to see how I did. I, I, I had groupies. Also, a Casanova shopkeeper told me there was only one L E D sign, which is at the entrance to the village. And that shopkeepers cannot put even a decal in a window without approval of the building. Now, historical, architectural and environmental preservation is overseen by a separate department with a paint staff. This is where I'm confused because I, they're, they're not apparently under the offices of the village or the town. They're a separate entity. But they're, they're linked some way with the political structure. Uh, they're hiring a fourth staff member who's a lawyer. Because they know they're going to have litigation to deal with from developers who are going to want to come in. And they're going to try to block that, but they're taking it seriously.
Who's painting them?
I don't know. Again, Casanova's got this and we don't. Okay?
They got that, like. We got a river.
Yeah, we got water. Scandinavia, so, Scandinavians has a, like, we got a river. Water's water. In July, I received photocopies of a letter found by David Quinlan. The letter was to abolitionist theater Monger, who was educated here at the academy. From Francis Carpenter, indicating his portrait studio was in the Y M C A in New York City but had succumbed to a fire. He indicated two significant paintings were unharmed. What we're, what we're finding is Carpenter changed studios in New York City more than some people change cars. Uh, and it's hard to keep track of where they all are, but this one told us it was at the Y. On July twenty-fifth, I wandered along Eagle Street during the Route Ninety sidewalk sales and found a reprint of a photo of the businesses that once were located where the Homer Post Office is now. Really incredible picture. Uh, and this I donated to the municipal archives. We're getting near the end. On October third, you thought it was gonna be easier, right? If we cut this in half, are you kidding? All the action is taking place since, all the activity has been since.
Very busy.
Uh, on October third, I received some artifacts from my cousin Karen Prince. They were actually our, our grandmother's uh. Material. The impressive one was a bowl carved from a supporting beam in the belfry of the old Baptist church in Homer. The one that was behind where the Center for the Arts is now. Incredible. Uh, so I gave that to the uh, History Center. On October twenty-third, received from Pebble Town historian, a large black box containing personal. Effects of the late Winifred Chrysler of Homer, including photos of academy football and soccer teams in nineteen twenty-eight. I've handed everything over to the History Center except these two. I'm keeping these for the education file. You believe this is, they got names in the back. No one puts names in the back. Bowl was anymore. Thank God they did. Look at that, look at the uniform. You can pass that around. Just don't get greasy. And I hate to tell you, but, but this one.
That's a field order by uh.
This is a baseball team out on the green. And I hate to tell you, this is Prof. Butts, who was my P E teacher back in the day. There'll be none of that. That date me or what? While we're on it, this came in since the, I did the report. Maybe somebody here dropped these off at my office, but I've got pictures of uh. The village board at, at, at different times, and they got the names on the back. This is good, which reminds me. You've already got one, one more left to go. You need to have a picture taken of everybody here before it changes complexion.
I thought we did that.
You, I want you to have one of those where you're seated like these guys are. And give me the names, please, for my, my successor. It's you. This, this goes with one of, there's got names in the back, but well, that's all right. Some of them you have to. I think I'm passing these along in chronological order. Very, that looks true. So if you want to be immortalized and memorialized, get your pictures taken, please.
And can we do the awkward looking off in different directions? Makes it more fun that way.
They showed you, they didn't know what they were doing. Okay, continuing here with this, I'm not letting. Um, on October twenty-third, I received from a William Shanahan, two ledgers. Covering the years eighteen thirty-seven to eighteen forty-four. The larger ledger covered purchases made by local citizens to what was likely the Homer Exchange next door. The name inside is John Sherman, who was the brother of William Sherman of the exchange. This is quite a valuable artifact. I wanted to bring it and pass it around, but I don't want any more fingerprints on it, so. John was a partner for a time with his brother Williams in operating the Sherman Exchange. On Main Street. John was the supervisor of the town of Homer in eighteen thirty-five, thirty-six and thirty-seven to thirty-eight. I'm going to assume the ledgers pertain to this Emporium. Next door. It was incredible seeing the names of like the superintendent of schools and the, and the sixteen. Early eighteen hundreds time period. And to realize that all these notables that I've written about. Are human beings and they're purchasing needles and threads and stuff like that. All the things that you need for life. Okay, let's finish up here by going down to the two addendums. I'll just focus in on the key points. Uh, starting with statistics, courtesy of the County Tourism and Visitor Center that support a heritage tourism site in Homer. Portland County's tourism impact in twenty twenty-one. Uh, was seventy-eight million dollars in travelers spent. Travelers were spending in several categories with food and beverage, leading the, the list at thirty-six point six million. Lodging at sixteen point six million. Retail sales at twelve point eight million. Recreation at five point seven million. Second homes at three point five million and transportation at point eight million. And at the bottom of page eight, I found that between state and local taxes generated from tourism. Portland County collected nine point seven million. Which translated to savings for county taxpayers. I have this in bold print. Were it not for tourism-generated state and local taxes. The average household in Portland County would have to pay an additional five hundred forty-two dollars per year to maintain the same level of government revenue. Something to be said, right? You told me this to get statistics. Okay, let's finish up with addendum B, which I just uh, copied on here, um, an excerpt that shows you. What they had to say about my presentation at the ethnic conference. Uh, and people had a kind of choice. They could come to A or they could come to B and you can see. I had a packed house for B. I'm gonna read this. This is, can, can much greatness come from a small community? The question reminds me of Nathaniel asking Philip in John one forty-six, can anything good come out of Nazareth? Philip answers, come and see. Sweeney, historians of the town and village of Homer in Central New York, will share what he has done since two thousand eight to show what greatness has come from this community. Through a regular column in Homer's newspaper, five published books, guided walking tours in nineteenth century garb. With public presentation, he has elevated Homer's history to a level worthy of celebration and promotion. Outfit has come, big ideas, a spruced up historic district with two hundred and twenty architectural gems. Homer is being awarded a ten million grant to the state's downtown revitalization mission. In current efforts to put up a monument in bronze, paying tribute to emancipation proclamation. And the three citizens of Homer who contributed by protection, paint and print. To our knowledge of Lincoln, namely Detective Eli DeWu, famed portraitist Francis Bittner Carpenter and the assistant personal secretary to the Lincolns. William Osborne Stoddard. Out of a small community came greatness and an opportunity for heritage tourism. A beckoning to come and see. End of report.
Uh, I would like a motion to accept the biannual village historian's report.
I will make a motion to accept the biannual.
Can I have a second?
I'll second it with that, thanks.
Discussion. Excellent part.
You know, does this, does this help that I also have a teacher that's in one of the pictures? So now that, that means of me as well, yeah. So I was like, wait, I know that guy.
Yeah.
And that's from like nineteen seventy-nine, I think, so. Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
All in favor?
Aye.
And in the opposed, none heard, motion carried.
I should point out, you of course, that in the end, we are all story.
Aren't we? That's all's left. So with that, December ninth, everybody dressed nice so we can have a board portrait. Now, Martin, does it have to be in black and white or can we be in color?
Oh, let's go, let's go with color.
I'm looking at the two thousand five.
I can always make it into sepia tone.
That's true. Uh, bypassing B, uh, we're gonna push that to the ninth. They needed another little bit more time. So next up is the uh, comp alliance. So you can see in your handout. Uh, we're doing pretty good. Uh, it's still a five point two five increase. But that is uh, very, very good for what we get. And on top of that, and I'm gonna knock on wood. Uh, we'll be getting four thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars back for having a safe workplace award.
These guys have saved us a lot of money to pull it in.
Yeah.
When we got out of the county's plan, but it was a good deal.
So, uh, this would be a two-year. We did it in twenty twenty-two. We did it in twenty twenty-four. I would look to a motion to authorize this uh, for another two-year agreement.
I'll make the motion that we extend it for two more years.
I second that.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None heard. Uh, we need to appoint a comp alliance board number. This. Uh, does not have to be. A member of our board, but in discussion. Not only was it, but actually with one of our other, with the brand, we might want to wait until the new board is seated. In case, uh, one of the new board members wants to do this. Hal was our member at large for this. He has offered to do so again. Um, however, with two new board members, it's probably best if we ask them if they are interested first. But uh, Hal has extended that he would like to do it, um. So I would like to table this discussion until January, when the next board is set. So, okay, we will table that. All right. Now we come to one of the fun parts of the evening. I am looking for a motion to authorize overriding the tax cap, li- tax cap. Limit for Cap Y twenty-six, twenty-seven. This is kind of a standard motion. We are still going through our budget. We don't know where we're going to be, but this is a precautionary measure so that if we do have to extend it. We have the flexibility to do so.
Make a motion that we approve the override of the tax cap limit for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Second?
I'll second.
Discussion. Again, this does not mean that we're going to do it.
Oh, I'm sure you are.
But it gives us the flexibility.
Oh, no, no, you're definitely not crazy. I don't see any way you can.
All right, uh, all in favor?
They screwed us, son.
Aye. Any opposed? None heard.
I'm in unhappy favor. How's that?
Yeah, well, I think we're all unhappy. Reed, where are you going?
Seth, yes, yes.
Tomorrow, tomorrow.
Thank you, Ray.
Gotta get those in every now and then. So, all right, uh, approve one fire, Homer Fire Department firefighter application.
Looks pretty good to me.
Yeah.
Looks pretty good to me, so I would like a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion where I accept the firefighter as presented in its paperwork.
I have a second. Great, thank you.
Keith Sherman.
All right, uh, we have a motion, we have a second, we discussed, discussion.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
You call your audible right now for the resolution. I appreciate it and Bob would appreciate it too.
Oh, okay. So I need to add something here for. All right. Oh, wait, I have it back here too. I have it listed twice. So. It is for subs for crossing guards. Okay, here we go. So with civil service. Anytime we add or want to. Um, have the ability to add, we have to pass. Uh, a resolution, a motion on our meeting minutes. Whether we fill the slot or not. And Chief Pittman is asking for some flexibility. To allow us to uh have the flexibility to hire more substitute crossing guards. So this does not mean that we're gonna fill all four, but it means it gives him the ability.
He doesn't have to have a police officer do it.
Well, it means he doesn't have to keep coming back to us. Saying I want to hire somebody, I wanna hire something. So we are just saying we're authorizing four more slots. For substitute crossing guards. So with that, uh, I would like a motion that we authorize. For additional part-time crossing guards.
I'll make that motion that we authorize for additional part-time parking or crossing yards.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. All in favor?
All right.
Aye. Chief Pittman, is that covered for you?
Well, I think what she was looking at is uh, we have four part-time. We don't differentiate differentiate between part-time and subs. So I believe four additional would, we don't have, we don't even have a number. Um, I had Maureen look it up. We don't even have a number that we're supposed to have, so. I think uh, we have four part-time right now. If we had four part-time or or subs, that would cover it.
All right, so we covered it.
Yep.
All right. Thanks, chief. All right. Well, once we get the uh minutes done, we'll send that over to civil service and that will cover that. All right, now. We have uh. Resolved this or we have done this resolution. Many, many times.
This time we might get it right.
So, well. The fourth time.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
This is the charm. We got this.
We got this.
We got this straight from the attorney.
There we go.
And uh with that, Dan, would you uh be so kind as to the resolution for us?
Resolved that the village hereby authorized sell to seven for the arts of Homer Inc. That portion of the White Chapel formerly known as the Little White Church. Located on Village of Homer Tax Map Parcel Number eight six dot eight two dash oh one dash two one dot oh oh. For the sum of two dollars. Upon the terms and conditions outlined in the purchase agreement dated October eleventh, twenty twenty two. And it is further resolved, the mayor is authorized to execute all documents that may be necessary to complete this transaction.
And I have a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make the motions to approve this by motion.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed, none heard. You notice we did not do a discussion on that. This was happening. All right, uh, Dan, did you already sign this yet? Have you signed this yet?
Yeah, it's all.
Okay. All right, comments by the attorney, he has none at this time. Uh, questions from? The media, thank you. I was gonna say the press corps, but that that is very limited because we have more. We've got radio. As well as uh digital, yes.
Broad thing.
Media.
Um, I was wondering what your timeline is for the village budget, like when you need to have the preliminary and adopted budget by.
So we don't actually have to have ours because our uh, let me, we do have to have it. Ours is not.
A different time, but I was wondering about that timeline.
So that timeline is uh, we are gonna, well, we'll cover that in a minute. Is. We are planning to have the preliminary budget in December. And then approve it in January. And if you, I will send you an email because I actually have the dates written down. Uh, for our our timeline, so I will send that to you. After this.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Hey mayor, I have one question.
Shoot.
Um, so what's, do you know what the village's tax cap limit is currently? Or do you guys have, does it need to one or no?
Oh, I I don't have that. Besides the two percent, I don't have the actual dollar amount. For that.
Okay, can I, also can I be on that email for the budget timeline as well?
Yep.
Please, thank you. That's it for me.
All right. All right. Jack?
Good.
All right. All right. So we will. All right, well. We'll cover this right now. Here is. We had asked, so for everybody, we had done a. Uh, one of our first preliminary. Pass this over to Mike. Uh. Budgets, uh, just looking at. Uh, costs for our budgets. And we realized that we had not raised. Uh, our recreation fees since twenty nineteen. And with the loss of uh, that new from the town of Cortlandville. We needed to adjust not only our current resident fee, but we needed to look at our non-resident fees. Uh, so we had tasked Andrew to come up with a proposal and you'll notice this is draft. Uh, so you can see, he'd like to add ten dollars and again, this is draft emphasizing that. Uh, for the resident fees and then you can look at the uh. Twenty five, fifty and seventy five. For non-resident fees. We'll take a look at that at our next budget session.
Just for your information, I think it should be a seventy five. And the ten dollars for the residents is fine with me. I think. When you look at football and what they went from a resident pays one twenty and a out-of-towner would be two ten. You know. That's reasonable.
So, so nothing that we need right now, but I would like to have your. Uh, preferences uh by Wednesday of next week. So I can start having Andrew tally up the revenues on proposed, so.
Check me out right now.
That you're going to seventy five?
Seventy five, yeah, that's not that much.
All right. Everybody else? Yeah, doing. All right. Let's see. Trees. Right. Uh, Glenwood Cemetery got me their tree list, but they have three priorities. That they would like to address this year. Uh, we have fifty four thousand dollars available in our tree fund. And he has three trees that he feels are a priority for this year. Doesn't require village, doesn't require board approval, but I did wanna discuss this with the board prior to so that. If they do get to it this year, people will know that there is one in section eleven south. One in section fourteen and one in section eighteen. They have thirty six non-priority trees. Uh, listed and I think we will need to take a look at that. We may need to do a separate RFP. Uh, to see what we can do. All right. All right, any questions on that? Thanks. Okay. The rest and wait till we go around. So we talked about recreation fees, trees. Uh, crossing guards. All right, Ed.
Like the current graduate Mike for a well-run campaign where he won me.
Welcome aboard.
Okay, good, then you run.
Yeah. All right. Liz?
Uh. So I was trying to think. Uh, the only thing I I can mention, I guess, is. That on December first, I'm the featured speaker for the League of Women Voters of Cortland County to talk about how to. Engage both of my professor hat and my uh, I guess trustee hat, how to uh engage with your elected officials. Through communication, so. Share whatever wisdom. If there's anything you all want me to share, uh, feel free to.
Elizabeth?
I'm gonna note that we spent the day together on Saturday. Start work or or.
Continue work to put in a lot of work. On the budget for the coming year where we got to meet with um the department heads and I. Just wanted to express my extreme gratitude to the department heads along with um the work that you have done, that you have done, that Mary Ellen has done to. Get preliminary numbers out there to get organized and to really um continue to work with everyone here. To see what services we need to provide and how we can do it in the most cost-effective way to. Uh, the taxpayer that also for it serves everything that's important about this community. I'm so impressed by the quality of the work, the presentations. And the continued commitment that our department heads have to um the work in the village. We really do have a wonderful staff here. We're very proud of them.
So I can tell.
Great, um, yeah, and I'll add the, I also appreciate all the the future planning as well, so not just about. And thinking about how are we navigating says.
Five-year plans and ten-year plans. It really does help to. Think about what is going to happen in the coming years.
Yeah, there was one when we came here.
That was awesome. All right, thank you. All right, next up. NICOM priority. So I attended a Zoom meeting. And went over, we are a uh, a member of the New York Council of Mayors. And it does, they do great work for all the members. And we had a. Extensive prioritization meeting about. What we uh, what should be the legislative priorities for next year? For the council of mayors to put forth and apply pressure on the state uh government. Uh, so. Uh, oh. We can. Ask these to Mike and anybody else that.
Likes to.
Long, yeah. So on the fighting side, it's uh, some of these are pretty straightforward. If anybody has any questions, hit me up for it later and we can go into more detail. Uh, but it's increased state aid to cities and villages. We've talked about dedicated funding for local water and sewer infrastructure, highway funding, which includes chips. Uh, and then a real-time grant clearinghouse for municipalities. So Dan doesn't have to go through five different websites uh trying to figure out which ones are ours. Um, energy, environment and technology, you know, we are already moving forward on protecting our water source and water contamination, but that's another thing. Uh. Recycling and waste reduction initiatives, especially since our lip, our tipping fee for the landfill is going. From ninety to a hundred and five dollars, which is gonna increase our cost by over sixteen thousand dollars. Anything that we can do for recycling and waste production, we're all for it. Uh. Limit the application and cost of the prevailing wage mandate. It kills us upstate here. Our our cost of living is not as high, but we with. Uh. Prevailing wage, we are paying city of New York wages and it's not the same. Uh. We are already working on the smart growth, but that's the priority. And then part of it with the uh employee relations and public safety, it's the. Uh, especially with uh our police department, we have a lot of part-time officers, but their salary capped based off their retirement. And currently it's thirty five thousand dollars. If they make anything more than that, they lose money from their retirement. So NICOM, we are pushing for to increase it from thirty five thousand to fifty five thousand. So that we can provide a little bit more competitive. I mean, a lot of these officers have uh. A large amount of experience and they still have the ability to do what we need them to do. Yet the state is penalizing them and preventing us from fully utilizing this resource. By allowing that to increase, that would allow us to hire and uh have more part-time officers. Uh, that wouldn't have to worry about losing part of their hard-earned retirement uh because of this. Uh, this tat, this cap. You you can see where I stand on that. All right. So that is, and I am happy to say that. All my choices were selected, so that means me and a bunch of other mayors are all of one accord. All right, uh, December sixth, we had it down as a tentative. I think we need it. Uh, is everybody good for December sixth for our next budget workshop?
Ninety percent sure, yes, but I'm double check.
Just remember, more committees.
I know, I know. Exactly. You don't show up, Mike. You don't realize what we.
Oh, I told him that before you came in.
You know. He gives the heads up.
Yep. All right. Uh. This is for everybody. December first, we talked about DRI. So we got to see that we just sold again. Uh, the the Little White Church. It was kinda necessary so they can now start moving forward with their DRI project. Uh, the hotel and spa. Is, there's gonna be a public hearing on December first at six o'clock.
Yes, I know.
Okay. Uh, we have the plans and the renderings up here in the village office. So if anybody is interested, please stop by. Now, this project is moving forward. This is to allow people to see what it's going to look like. Uh, we have already run through our fire department. Uh, we've run through our water and sewer and we've run through our police department. So they are, they've taken a look at everything. We're good to go. So this is so that people can know what to expect once we start, once we, once they start turning dirt. Uh, this spring, but gonna be exciting. So if you're interested and wanna see what's gonna happen, December first. Uh. The comp plan, uh, I have interviewed just about everybody I need to for the steering committee. And I have one person left and so we have a good turnout. And those that did not uh. Make the list for the steering committee, we have other aspects that they will be, the Highland planning will be calling. Some of the other ones and then I'll be reaching out to those that uh. Fall out from there to see if they'd be interested in participating in some of our other uh committees. So I was really pleased with the turnout and uh we definitely have room for everybody in some way, shape or form. All right. And I know I had a lot there, uh, so with that. We do need to go into executive session uh to discuss uh. Labor contractual. Uh, issues.
I'll make a motion that we uh.
Any other questions from the crew? As I mentioned, a whole bunch of other things at the end.
We're good. I'm good.
Okay.
Make a motion that we're, we. Bob need to be in this executive profession?
Uh. He can if he wants to be.
Go ahead and close everything on and start again, so.
Okay.
So that's. Do you have a chief?
No, uh, he can if he wants, but.
Mike, do you wanna stay?
I don't think so. He'll, he'll get caught up.
If you wanna stay, you can, but you don't have to.
Sure, why not? Uh, we gotta motion we go on executive session. Uh, per con, uh contractual. Um, negotiations. Second. Uh, all in favor? Aye, and the opposed, none heard.